All right, we are now on the six o'clock hour. It's time to start the city council meeting and I'll officially call it to order for tonight, June 15th, 2020. Cindy, can we please do your call?
Councilmember Dennehy?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Haquez?
Present.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? Absent. Councilmember B Smith? Absent. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here. We'll now have the pledge allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have some citizens that wish to speak to council. Ryan Stevens, I did have one that called me on the phone. I just thought it would be good to address this question because I've had several people ask me, and is there a way that we can open the splash pad for our kids at Centennial Park?
Yeah, so that is an issue that we are working on. You know, some of the challenges around that are, you know, the splash pad is considered playground equipment and currently that restrictions limited to 10. We have a variance from the county that we're waiting on. It looks like, you know, and Rex Brady did talk to the county health department today. It looks like we might be able to get more in there, but right now it's really around a logistical issue and then a staffing issue. So we're short-staffed right now in the parks department and we would need to hire some additional splash pad monitors as well to monitor the splash pad, which I think we can do. It's just a matter of trying to figure out some of these logistical problems that we have. So during peak season, you know, the hottest days, typically the weekends, we see anywhere from 100 to 150 kids on the splash pad at any given time. So we would have to figure out some type of system. It would have to be fenced off. The health department is also telling us that we would have to take names and telephone numbers for every child that entered the splash pad area as well. So those are all some of the things that we're trying to work out at this point.
That is very logistical. Councilmember Meisner?
He answered my question. We'd have to fence it off. I mean, he's just trying to figure out how you do crowd control. It'd have to be, which may not be a bad idea long-term to have that thing a little more secure during non-use if, you know, if it was maybe lockable. So.
That's a good point. And with the swimming pool being closed and the river being high, it would be nice to have an alternative for our kids on these hot days.
Absolutely. We agree and we're working on it.
Okay, thanks. I'm glad to hear that you're working on it. Look forward to hearing more. We'll now turn the time over to Carol Dunn from Canyon City Energy Future Group. Carol, you do have three minutes to address city council.
You're on mute, Carol.
Oh yeah, you're on mute. So as soon as you're on unmute, we'll start the timer.
All right. Okay, I figured it out. We've been doing several Zoom meetings, so it just takes a minute to go, okay, now what do I do? Over the last two and a half years of working with Canyon City's Energy Future and other interested people in the community, Canyon City Council has been receptive to thoughts and suggestions about solving the problem of an unresponsive utility who is charging our citizens the highest rate along the front range. Canyon City's Energy Future would like the council to consider a few more ideas as you continue to ponder the agreement. As a franchise renewal with Black Hills is pursued, please consider changing the franchise language to make it an only five-year renewal. Even though the citizens of Pueblo did not go forward with municipalization earlier this year, there's still an exit ramp for them in another five years. And like it or not, our faiths are linked to our neighbors on the east side. We also suggest that language be added stating that the utility must continue to collect and remit the franchise fee even if a franchise is not in place. And also remove the additional proposed 1% undergrounding fee. This fee is not something Canyon City folks can take right now. As you go forward to the necessary vote of the citizens of Canyon City on the franchise, we all must be aware of the situation Pueblo voters found themselves in. Pueblo voters were bombarded with scaremongering claims in TV and print ads. The question was never answered as to who paid for the millions of dollars that were spent fighting the Pueblo violence issue. What lies will BAG, Black Hills Energy, tell in Canyon City if and when the franchise renewal comes to a vote here? We look forward to continuing working with council and if we can be of any help, Canyon City's Energy Future folks are ready, willing, and able to help in any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
And then we also have Emily Tracy, also about Black Hills.
Right, thanks, Mayor, council, and staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the Black Hills franchise. As Carol noted, there was the recent election in Pueblo. We were disappointed not only in the result, but also in the fact that there was so much money spent by Black Hills. And because of a four-to-three vote on the Pueblo City Council, we'll really never know how much money was spent by Black Hills, but we expect that we'd see something similar here if and when we go to a franchise renewal vote. We see that now is our opportunity in Canyon City to explore other options and perhaps do what some other communities are doing. For example, we know that San Isabel would be interested in talking with Canyon City about possible ways they could be involved in providing electricity and service to our community. There are wholesalers, electric power wholesalers operating in the area and in Colorado such as Guzman Energy, Capital Dynamics. For example, recently, the city of Fountain has a new contract with Guzman Energy, which will save them tens of millions of dollars over a 12-year life of the contract and allow them greater flexibility to pursue renewable energy. Delta Montrose Rural Electric Association has a contract with Guzman Energy, and Guzman actually paid the $62.5 million cost to take over the power supply contract from Tri-State that Delta Montrose had. So they'll be able to save on power and also be able to develop new solar facilities more quickly for power generation. Capital Dynamics is another company that's been operating and actually has saved CSU Pueblo some money in the solar area. So we, once again, we're asking that Canyon City's Energy Future be allowed to have a full, not just a three-minute comment, but a full dialogue with the city about what the options are for Canyon City at this point, exploring municipalization, possible working with San Isabel Electric Association, possible deals with wholesale power providers. If, on the other hand, you proceed with the renewal of the existing franchise, we do, as Carol said, ask for several changes in that draft renewal. We wonder if there's anything from your executive session this evening that you can share with us and with the public. And again, would love to have a work session with you or really more clearly a community-wide meeting to discuss what these options might be with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Are there any questions or comments for Emily or Carol from the city council members?
Just like to, I'd just like to say that we have appreciated your interest in this subject and, you know, we have had several, I have had several meetings with Canyon City's Energy Futures and we're interested in continuing to hear from you as we move forward in this process, but stay tuned. We should, we should have some announcements about agenda items coming up.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. Thank you for coming in and addressing city council. We definitely appreciate it. We are going to move on to council member announcements. Do we have any announcements from our council members? Councilmember Haquez?
This is necessarily an announcement, but I want to take this opportunity to say that Canyon City is going to be losing a very fine chief of police. This gentleman came to us when we needed help with regards to our police department, with a lot of obstacles to overcome. He's done a fine job with all respect to everything that came up. He's had a tough job to do. I can understand his wanting to go back and be with family and that, so I just want to say that Chief Harvey will be very sadly missed. You know, I've talked with him numerous times, you know, and we had calls back and forth when I've asked him a question for something. He's always been there to answer and respond back. I just wish him all the luck in the future, wherever he goes and all that, but I just say, you're a wonderful person. You're a great chief for us and that. I think you're really too young to retire. Let your ability that you have with regards to your career look forward, but enjoy your life with your family and that. You'll be truly missed by myself and I know a lot of other folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Haquez. Councilmember Gonzalez, would you like to make a statement? Councilmember Meisner?
I'd just like to reiterate some of the things that Frank said, that it's been a pleasure having Derek here and we'll miss him and we'll move on.
Ditto. About, about our chief, please, chief. But over the last couple of months, we've had, we've all had our trials and we've endured a lot. And I specifically want to point out to our, that our small business owners here in Canyon City have had to endure a lot, many of them closing their doors, many of them having to rewrite procedures and, you know, seek out funding. I have been approached by many small business owners who have been thrilled with Rick Harmon. And I want to just make it known publicly that we are very thankful that he is part of our staff and the work that he's put into, into our community before this position, but now also, I just want to just put those kudos out to him and let him know that he's getting a very positive and strong response from our community.
Let him know.
Great, thank you. And that's a good lead-in too. I really wanted to express some heartfelt gratitude to the COVID-19 Business Leaders' Task Force, which Rick Harmon has been a part of, and Brad DeFowler from the city staff, as well as a number of other of our citizens from, business owners, citizens, and leaders in our community. And we have thanks, thank you notes from all of the city council to our COVID-19 task force that they'll be receiving and to help get our businesses through this tough time. And again, grateful for Rick Harmon as well and Chief Harvey, of course, in his service, especially during the COVID-19 as well. I have received a number of emails from citizens that have been worried about the protesting and the riots concerning police policy and safety for our community. And I just want to reiterate that, at least for me as Canyon City mayor, I am in support of making any types of law enforcement that needs to be more efficient or better trained or more responsive, that would be to the needs of all of our community members. Right at the beginning of the riots, we did invite our police chief and some of our diverse members of our police department, officers and sergeant, to address city council already coming up with some solutions that we can have in our own policies. You know, I think our department's doing really well. There's always room for improvement. In address, in response, there is, if you go to our, the city's Facebook page or Ashley Smith Canyon City Mayor's Facebook page, you can go back and watch that segment of that Facebook Live that we had with our chief and officers. But I want to answer some questions for all of Canyon City, that yes, our police do have body cameras and they are told to use them. We have just added the 715 pages of police policy onto the CCPD website in an act of transparency. Our CCPD have been given a variety of de-escalation trainings. We have scheduled a meeting for the CCPD's command staff to meet with city council on July 22nd. This is an opportunity to have some really good discussions on ways we can improve and do better for our policies and ways that we can be proactive in taking care of all of our citizens. And as I mentioned, we are fortunate to have a diversity of ethnicities and cultures on our CCPD that can offer important insights and suggestions on how our policies and practices can be improved to ensure more equity of treatment and prevention of excessive force, especially under stressful situations. Fremont County has had probably well over four protests already, as far as I know, they have all been peaceful. And our CCPD's goals, and I think Canyon City's goals, is to be proactive and to prevent the need to voice frustration in Fremont County via rioting. And the CCPD also closely monitors to anticipate if a riot could be brewing and that we do have backup support if needed. So I just thought it'd be good to send that out to our, to our public, to let them know that we are on top of the situation and taking it very seriously and being as proactive as we can to have solutions. Other than that, we just have a general government?
Yes, I'd like to comment on that too. And, you know, ditto's on everything that everyone said about Chief Harvey. He's been really a joy to work with. I've been on, sat on a board with him concerning the emergency dispatch center. It's been a joy to work with him. And I would also like to say, Madam Mayor, on what you just commented on, one of the things this council did a while ago now, and something that we're kind of the leader in the state and perhaps even in the nation, is diverting mental health issues out of the justice system into mental health help, where people that have needs that are not criminal justice-related can perhaps, but have behaviors that bring them to the attention of our law enforcement officers can get diverted into behavioral health situations where perhaps they can get the help that they needed. And I, and I just want, we're kind of in a way patting ourselves on the back, but, but I'm proud that our council took these actions quite a while ago to start addressing issues that looks like the rest of the nation are just catching up on.
Thank you for that, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick. That's right. And our police department has recognized that the regular policing that was, has traditionally been done over the years is changing, and we have been ahead of the mark on those changes in shifting more into also, police department going more into social work and mental health. And we actually have a mental health clinician on the CCPD staff in our correspondent program. And so that's another kind of kudos of being kind of ahead of the mark and helping in those areas. But we do have that vision committee on Wednesday and that's with HR, is that right?
Actually, the vision committee on Wednesday has been canceled. We're rescheduling that with HR.
Okay, so we have the day off.
I was wondering why it was canceled.
We're working on the handbook and there were some additional items that we wanted to make sure that we addressed before we brought it to council.
Okay. That's good. I'm glad that'll be thorough. I would like to move on to item number six on our agenda, and that is for a proclamation on World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, which is June 15th, 2020. And we have Jamie Ellis on our Zoom meeting and I'd like to invite her to join us and maybe address about elder abuse awareness. She is the new director for the Golden Age Center and this is a good opportunity for us to meet Jamie.
I'm here. I apologize, I can't get my video to work.
We can hear you.
Okay, that's good.
There's a television for you.
So yeah, I just wanted to bring up the World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and just kind of bring it to light to everybody with everything going on with COVID and our seniors being a lot more isolated than they normally would have. It's a real concern right now. And from everything I've understood, it's one in 10 seniors suffer from abuse and one in 14 of those cases are never reported. So it's not just physical abuse, it's physical, sexual, financial exploitation, neglect. It can be anything. And so we just really want to make people aware of taking care of our elders, keeping an eye out on them, checking in on your neighbors. Sometimes those elders can't speak up for themselves, they can't always defend themselves. And so, you know, especially right now with everything that's going on, just, just keep an eye out, check on people, talk to them, ask them how they're doing, watch for anything strange going on. And we've posted a lot of tips and things to watch out for on our Facebook page as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. The proclamation for June 15th, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day, I'll read a part of that, it says, "Whereas older adults deserve to be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and vital participating members of our communities. Whereas ageism and social isolation are major causes of elder abuse in the United States. And whereas recognizing that it is up to all of us to ensure that proper social structures exist so people can retain community and societal connections, reducing the likelihood of abuse. And whereas preventing abuse of older adults through maintaining and improving social supports like senior centers, human services, and transportation will allow everyone to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life and vibrancy of our communities. Therefore, I, Ashley Smith, Mayor of City of Canyon City, Colorado, do hereby call upon all citizens to observe June 15th, 2020, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day." Are there any questions or comments from city council that you might have for Jamie Ellis or about elder abuse?
I don't.
All right, well, thank you again, Jamie, for being a part of our meeting tonight and bringing this to our awareness and to our community's awareness and the work that you do at the Golden Age Center.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to the consent agenda, the agenda.
Mayor and members of council, item 8A is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting on June 1st, the general government meeting on June 3rd, and the special city council meeting on June 1st. And 8B is to receive and file a list of bills.
Are there any questions? Let's see, councilmember Meisner?
My first question is in regards to the bills. Actually, you're both as usual. I see, I see a court restitution to Walmart. What is that? Bottom of the bill, page, page two?
Actually, I know that we have Tammy Nordike on the phone. Tammy, do you know what that was in relation to?
I just find it, I'm not concerned about the dollar amount, I just find it odd.
The, the case, that the police, there was somebody involved in an incident and the court ordered restitution. The restitution was paid to the courts and we had to turn it over to Walmart.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Then we also have our, our community agent funding to a place called Home. Did that in fact happen because of reimbursement or because we just decided to pay them? What process?
That has been done on reimbursement. They have submitted all of their receipts to us and we have verified and double-checked their numbers. This was the second payment that we've made to them and we are keeping track to make sure that we are not paying more than what the funding agreement was.
Thank you. Excellent.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've noticed that we've got $1,000 in there for rabies vaccinations. Is that for, is that a clinic that the city helps fund or what is?
That's for our code enforcement officers.
They get the rabies vaccinations.
Yes.
That was for council.
For us.
Thank you. And also I note that we're right under that for gross Fremont CEC, we've got solar electric service for quite a sum of money, almost 20,000. And do you know what that is for, Mr. Administrator?
Yeah, that's our payment for the subscription to the Solar Garden.
I see.
That council approved a couple of years ago.
Right, correct. Which gets deducted somewhere, right?
Right, so it's a, it's a reduction in our Black Hills bills because we're, we've subscribed, so we get credits on the Black Hills bills for our subscription to the Solar Garden.
And we're making money on that.
We are making some money on that, yes. Or not necessarily making money, but reducing our bills.
Reducing our bills, thank you very much. The, and I also see that we're recruiting for four positions, is that correct?
We are.
And the, what are the positions?
Utility maintenance worker, park maintenance worker, seasonal staff at the parks, and police officers.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilmember Meisner?
Mayor and council, I move that we approve the minutes. We're on the, yeah.
The consent agenda?
Mayor and council, excuse me, I apologize for that. I move that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda as read and printed. Second?
There's been a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to our administrator report, please.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. So within the building departments, the St. Cloud has sent in their first application to Colorado Code Consultants. They've received their response back from CCC and they're working on, you know, addressing the questions that came up through that first review. We are still continuing to see applications for new homes and this month seems to be picking up even more. So, you know, it's a good trend to continue to see. Really didn't slow down that much during some of the COVID closures. And then Express Car Wash should have their permit issued for this week. That is for a project that's going in over by Jewett Liquor. Water departments, we had a cross connection position that we filled internally by James Arsenault, so we want to congratulate him on that new position. And as I just mentioned, that created another vacancy, so we'll be filling a position for utility maintenance worker. The parks department, the city and the recreation district were working with HRA regarding putting some complimentary personal flotation device centers, kiosks out at Centennial Park, the rec, or, yeah, the rec district is looking at McKenzie and the Reynolds locations as well for PFDs. So really, again, with the pools being closed and lots of people going to the rivers, we're trying to, to find ways to promote river safety, and this is one of the things that we're looking at. Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they're, they're working on actually providing the actual flotation devices. We're, we're working on building a potential structure internally to put out there at Centennial Park. Last week, we had three bars open up. They were kind of the last of the COVID businesses that couldn't open. They had to rethink their business plans, they had to open as restaurants, and they, they started opening last week on Thursday, which was the same day as the downtown farmer's market. All indications from over the weekend is that things went well. I know that, you know, some of those bars, they hit capacity, their, their new capacity, which was 50% of their occupancy, you know, several points during the weekend. So it's, it's nice to see those businesses back open and I know we have some happy business owners. And again, I think they would echo Councilwoman Gonzalez's comments about Rick Harmon and how he was working with them and being a liaison with the health department to, to help work on those protocols and get those businesses open. help work on those protocols and get those businesses open. The library and the museum have both applied for variances through the county in order to try and get them open. So that was submitted to the state on Tuesday, so we're, we're hoping to hear that response so we can open up those facilities as well. We're continuing to do curbside at the, at the library. They're working on a lot of deferred maintenance and cleaning activities at the library, at the museum. They're cataloging a lot of their collections as well as running tours on a appointment basis. So they're still operating, they're just not operating at their capacity. And then, you know, with the police departments, you know, we have Chief Harvey retiring, Tammy Wagner will be stepping in as the interim police chief, as well as Sergeant Walsh will be stepping up as an interim commander during this time. And we are working on the recruitment for a police chief. One thing that is not on the administrator's report that will be coming to council, the, when the federal government passed some of the CARES Act funding, they set aside some money for municipalities and states. Some of that money is actually starting to run through. So the Department of Local Affairs is working with the county and the county will be working with the municipalities to distribute those funds. So I want to let council know that there's a short timeframe on there, so we're working with the city attorney and reviewing those agreements, but we'll probably have to have it signed by the mayor and we'll bring it back to council on July 6th for ratification. But that would be additional funds to help with COVID-related expenses. With that, I'd be open for questions.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Um, excuse me. The car wash, is that right next to Jewett's on the same property? I remember it was split in two.
Yeah, it was subdivided into three, into three lots and it will be on the corner lot. It'll, it'll be its own, its own address.
Okay. And then you said that bars were the last to open, what do we know about food trucks?
Food, food trucks are open.
They can come?
They can operate, yes.
Okay.
And we had several food trucks at the farmer's market on Thursday.
I just didn't know if they were able to come, like, like the fish truck and?
You know, I don't know what the counties, you know, the county had some moratorium on food trucks that were not based within Fremont County. I don't know if they've released that, but I could look into that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I believe that they, I'll, actually, I'll look into it for you.
I can, I believe they did because there was food trucks and all that recently and they are coming in.
Yeah.
They are coming in from out of, out of county.
So they can?
Yeah.
They are.
Tim would notice. My little console is looking like it's coming in by code. It's all gibberish. I'm gonna get, I see a light on over here, Council, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick, did you have something?
I did, I had a couple of questions. Ryan, can you tell us where we are on our, on the street usage issue for individuals that want to expand their, their restaurants out into the street? Is there something going on there, something that council's going to need to do or is that under your purview and judgment and action?
So we haven't had any requests actually go into the streets yet. I think, you know, a lot of the businesses, you know, with the expansion of the sidewalks, it's allowed them to expand onto the sidewalks and we have not, at this point, we haven't had any requests to go into the streets. For businesses that aren't downtown and aren't expanding onto the sidewalks, a lot of them are expanding within their own parking lots. So what we have tried to do is work with them on variances for parking, parking requirements and things like that during this time.
So it's a case-by-case basis?
It is, but we, we haven't denied anybody, you know, it's, I think everybody is, is really being flexible and adapting very well and we're, you know, we're trying to encourage that.
Great, I'm pleased to hear that. And also with Chief Harvey retiring, he was the, the city's representative on the CRCA Board, the Combined Regional Communications Authority Board. Are we, the, will we be, that come in front of us to appoint a replacement?
It will and we will make that recommendation. I have a, a meeting with interim chief Wagner on Wednesday and we'll be discussing that topic.
There is a meeting Thursday and I would recommend that the, that, that someone from the police department show up at least to listen and hear what's going on with the authority so that they can, if, if, if that person is not the person chosen by you to represent us, that they can at least, you know, interface with them to bring them up to speed on what's going on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilmember Meisner.
So Wagner is actually our acting chief.
She is our interim chief, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because my console's not working very well, was there any other comments or questions from councilmembers? Okay, I did, go ahead, go ahead.
One more thing, I forgot to say this earlier, but is there, is, has our light, have our traffic lights been timed recently? I mean, seriously, they, they seem to be taking a very long time lately.
The ones on Highway 50?
Yes.
We can ask CDOT, those are CDOT lights and they're, I know Jay, Jason from CDOT was down here last, on Friday and we were talking about the, specifically the one at Dozier and how that needed to be looked at again, but we, you know, we can certainly.
So the one on, on 15th seems to be taking a very long time, and the one on Orchard.
To join in on Dolly's conversation, I, I've been under the assumption that those are intelligent lights, but I, I get confused when there's no traffic on the US 50, none. And the lights don't change. I mean, I think that's ludicrous that the, that the technology's not there with a camera or something to say, hey, there's nobody coming, I could turn red and not interrupt traffic.
But you'd get a ticket.
Well, not technically, but anyway.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll look into it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ryan, in response to some of the open dining, I know, Dolly, you've mentioned this before too, and I've had a lot of other people reach out to me and send me pictures of the food court dining. Where are we at with that as far as being able to?
So some of the comments we've received from downtown restaurants and downtown businesses where we would likely do something like that was, they wanted to see where the sidewalk dining would take them first. They had some concerns about losing parking spaces and customers having to walk further.
So I thought about that because I sent you guys that picture of Salida and they don't have the double sidewalks that we have, where we have, you know, I, I don't know what we technically call them, but we have a larger sidewalk seating area in between that. And the frustrating thing about it in Salida is that if you have a restaurant who has brought their seating out into the street, if you're walking down the sidewalk, you have to walk around the seating area, you can't walk through the seating area. So it creates kind of a inconvenience to people who are just passing through. So I think it's smart to, to try it out on sidewalk first if they want to, because we have the space to do it.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, we, we have a lot of businesses that are using the, the amenity zone that haven't used it in the past and we're hearing a lot of very positive results from that. So I think it will be trial and error for a while, but I think, you know, we'll continue to monitor, monitor that and see if there's a need to actually take it into the streets. And then, you know, we'll also continue to, to work towards that entertainment district as well in the future.
Okay. Would that be through the Downtown Business Alliance or?
I think, you know, it'd be through our Main Street program and working with the Downtown Business Alliance and the Chamber and, and all parties that are, would be affected by it.
Okay. Councilman Haquez?
When we're talking about businesses now going off of the sidewalks and into the streets, my question is going to be this, who will be the final say-so whether it happens or not? Will it be come through the planning commission, will it go through you, or will it come to council? Because, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with businesses expanding, but we lost a lot when we went and get away with the turn lanes and then we went to angle parking. And if we're even, even thinking about allowing businesses to go out into the street, I mean, that would be, in my opinion, a negative aspect more than a positive aspect because one, we're going to lose parking spaces, it's going to create traffic problems and everything else, and it's going to create safety problems. So my question is, who will be the final say-so with regards to that? Will that be strictly the, the planning commission, you, or does that something that comes back to council for a final decision?
I, I think it would depend on how we do it. If, if we're doing it as a special event where it's more like a, you know, one-off for, you know, once a week or once every other week type of food court, I think that would be something that I would approve administratively. Whereas if it was something that we're going to be closing down for, you know, weeks or months at a time, I, I would want to bring that before council and have a bigger discussion about that.
All right, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
He answered my question.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to item number nine, and this is for the urban renewal plan. What we actually need is to have a motion to continue it until July 20th, 2020, as we are still in negotiations. But we, I just wanted to know if there's any questions from council for Ryan or for Corey as we are developing the URA negotiation process.
I just want to say for council, I believe we are making progress with our taxing entity partners and that is part of the reason why we're asking for an extension here to hold the public hearing on the 20th, because we are getting closer with our taxing partners and we just need a little bit more time.
Any questions from council? And I'd like to entertain a motion to continue the, the public hearing until July 20th, 2020. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Mayor and council, I move that we continue the public hearing for consideration of the urban renewal plan to July 20th, 2020.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Then I will call for a vote, please. Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Haquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Excellent, has been approved. And let's go to discussion on item number 10, and this is for the Boys and Girls Club of Fremont County, 2020 Community Agency Funding. Ryan Stevens, would you like to give us a report?
Actually, we've got Tammy on the phone and Tammy, do you want to give us an update on this one, please?
Yes, we had the Boys and Girls Club reach out to us and ask if they could redirect their community agency funding grant for 2020 to be used for operating costs. Because of COVID, they were not able to have their cowboy ethics program, which was one of the programs that the city had funded. I did attach our guidelines for council's reference and in those guidelines, it does state that we are not to use, that the community agency funding is not to be used for operating expenses. So that's why we're bringing it to council for their approval and discussion or, you know, if, if it's some, if they choose not to fund it, we, we need something from council. We did not feel that administratively we should approve or deny it.
So part of that conversation, some of the nonprofits in Fremont County, we met with the State Agency for Nonprofits and about how, how they compared, check themselves to be able to keep operating through COVID-19. And one of their recommendations was for them to go to their funders and ask if they could have more flexibility in the funding that they had received. And so a lot of those nonprofits are going to their funders and that might be part of that request from the Boys and Girls Club. So this is just a discussion, I think we're just giving, is this just a thumbs up or down?
Yeah, I thi, I think what we're looking for is some direction from council on what, what you'd like to see your, you know, I, I would imagine that if you approve this one, this will not be the last one that you hear.
And this is a special exception for 2019. I definitely would not want to see this being a long-term change in plans if it was passed. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Well, that's kind of what I was going to say is right now I think we need to show a little bit of grace in, in how we're allowing our nonprofits to spend their money. None of us have ever been in a pandemic before and, you know, the money that they were asking for was, was not used. They're not able to sustain, you know, their, their business. So I, I think, you know, with the exception of, of what we're going through, I think we should consider it.
Councilmember Meisner?
Well, I, I guess I'm just not comfortable with a blank check. I, I don't have a problem considering the situation whether I weren't able to use those funds for, for the purposes that we had intended, but to say, here's $2,500, use it as you please, I'm not comfortable with that. I, I would like to see some restriction in terms of how those are, funds are used or some documentation in terms of how those funds are used. And I, I wouldn't have a problem blank check saying for COVID-related expenses, yes, but I think we're going down the wrong hole here to say we can use it for operating expenses.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you for that, Jim and, and Madam Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The, I certainly hear, hear what you're, you're saying, Mr. Meisner, about, you know, the purpose that the funds were granted was for specific projects within the community that were reviewed essentially by the, you know, by a small committee and then by the entire council. And so because of that, you know, and because of the COVID situation, I understand the, the reluctance to write a blank check, but, but I, I, I'm not sure that this is the middle of June, I'm not sure that we want to dive down into the weeds, you know, for council action to redirect those funds. I think it's appropriate for the agencies to tell us what, what they want to do and with some accounting oversight, make sure that, that the funds are expended for a community purpose would be great. If it's, if it happened to be COVID-related, that's all the better, but, but in these extraordinary times, I'm, I'm willing to, to put minimal restraints on them.
Councilman Haquez?
Yeah, the one thing that, you know, I agree with a lot of stuff saying, but the one thing that I noticed with, with Mr. Stevens is if this goes, you're going to have a lot of this. And I would hate to see us do that with other agencies. They say, well, they did it and they got to use it how they want it. The purpose when we give money is when they come to us, they have a set reason why they want the money. And I need, I think we need to stick with that, that way of doing business and that. I don't have a problem with them coming back and saying, okay, this is where we're going to put that money at, not just, you know, we're going to look at. This way, when they come back and say, this is where we're going to do it, we can see if it still falls under the guidelines that we do with regards to all the other agencies when they come to us for money every year to help with, you know, their, their, their purposes and that. So I would hate to see this go the way it is. I want them to come back and be specific where, you know, where, where we're looking at it.
Councilman Dennehy, did you want to make any comments tonight?
No.
Okay. Um. Okay. Um, I, it sounds like the consensus is to have them go back and earmark how they would like to redirect that money and then leave it to the accounting to be able to make that judgment call, if that's okay? I would imagine there could be some COVID-19 associated costs because they did, uh, we did actually reach out to them and asked them to provide, um, childcare for critical workers at the beginning of the COVID shutdown. And they stepped up to the plate and provided that. So if we're comfortable with that, um,
I think we've got our direction.
Our direction.
Thank you.
Okay. And then let's go down to item B, and that's introduction, first reading by title only, ordinance 10, series of 2020. And that's for Canyon City appropriating additional sums of money for the city's 2019 budget. And we'll turn that to Tammy Nordike as well.
It is to the self-insurance fund.
Tammy, you, you were, you were on mute. Can you start over, please?
Sure, that gave me practice. What you have before you is, um, an ordinance appropri, requesting to appropriate additional funds of money for the 2019 budget. This will be specifically for the self-insurance fund. As we were finalizing all of our numbers for 2019, our bottom line in self-insurance fund would have been, is short by $60,203. That's specifically tied to, tied to claims. Um, we're asking that the expenses be increased from $2,394,920 to $2,455,123. And that is the, that is the summary of the, of the ordinance that we're requesting.
Um, are there any questions from council? Can we have a repeat of the totals, please?
Oh, never mind. Nope, I found it.
We're educated.
That's always good. If there are no questions from council, I'd like to entertain a motion. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve.
Which one you like on?
Ordinance number 10, series of 2020.
So have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, thank you, City Council, thank you, staff, thank you, citizens, and this meeting is adjourned.